I'd like to call the board for the regular meeting of the planning commissions for Tuesday, March 16th. Um, Tracy, would you introduce the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monette?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Present.
Chair Kistner?
Here.
Commissioner Knudsen?
He's in Spain.
Oh, absent.
Uh, next item is public forum, and this is opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not on the, on this agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion or take action on matters not described on this agenda. Please observe a time limit of three minutes. Is there any public forum? Close public forum. Uh, we have, uh, an item on the consent calendar, excuse me. It's the approval of the minutes of May the 2nd. Does anyone wish to pull it?
I move to approve the minutes of May the 2nd.
Second?
Don't we have other items on the consent?
Chair Kistner, I believe you're reading the minutes from the last-
Sorry.
Yeah, commission meeting.
Excuse me, thank you. Um, 4.2 is Dehoff Resident Design Review at 1734 Scott Street. 4.3 is Harrison Resident Design Review at 1616 Kearney Street.
I believe I would have to recuse from that consent item, so why can we break out the consent into two separate votes?
Okay. Do I hear-
Because of where I live, sorry.
That item will have to be continued because there's no quorum for it if, if we have a recusal.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'm within the 300 feet at 1407 Kearney Street.
Okay, do I hear, um, a motion for 4.1 and 4.2?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. So 4.3 will have to be, um-
Continue to the next-
Next meeting? Mm-hmm. Public hearings, 5.1, request by the City of St. Helena Fire Department for adoption of a resolution approving a use permit in order to establish and operate a secondary fire station at 1025 Dowdell Lane in the industrial district.
Thank you, Chair Kistner. Due to increased calls for service as well as increased traffic congestion, it has become necessary for the fire department to consider alternative methods of meeting the growing demands of the public in order to maintain high standards of service and rapid response times. Therefore, the City of St. Helena Fire Department has requested use permit approval in order to modify the use of the existing property to implement and operate a second fire station, uh, it'd be Station 217, with the purpose of improving and effectively maintaining the standards of service and call response times. The proposed station would not be regularly staffed, would operate in the same manner as the existing station located at 1480 Main Street, which is currently a paid-per-call response model, where emergency personnel respond to the station upon receiving a call for service. Approximately six to 10 fire personnel would be assigned to the station. These responders would utilize the existing, uh, six parking stalls to park personal vehicles as they respond to the station for emergencies. As part of station operations, the fire department would house one fire apparatus, that would, uh, be a fire engine, and one utility vehicle, which would be something like a pickup truck outfitted with the light bar siren and other emergency response amenities on-site. Minor improvements would be made to the existing structure in order to house the 27-foot-long fire apparatus, including moving interior wall approximately 13 feet. No additional floors or living quarters would be added. The station would not have, uh, community service, uh, warning siren to notify emergency response personnel, and the existing warning sirens at City Hall at 1480 Main Street and 1405 Charter Oak would remain in use. Consistent with general plan industrial land use designation, the site exhibits a zoning designation of industrial as well, and while the establishment of fire stations is not explicitly identified as a conditional use in the industrial district, ambulance and services do require use permit. Uh, therefore, we were staffed felt it was appropriate that a fire station, uh, would require use permit as well. The proposed fire station would increase public safety by improving fire department response times, benefiting both locals and tourists alike. Furthermore, the proposed change in use would not conflict with or inhibit in other industrial uses in the area. Staff finds that the project meets and/or complies with required findings to approve a use permit, and therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15301, and accept the required findings and approve a resolution granting use permit for a new fire station at 1025 Dowdell Lane. Um, Chief John Sorensen is here, uh, if you have any questions of him about the project.
Any questions? Well, I have a statement to make first. Uh, I don't believe we should be hearing this. Uh, I believe the city council should approve this before we hear, we hear this. That's my own, that's my own-
Yeah, since we don't know that we have the money for it, that's what you mean.
Well, I, I don't know about the money, I think the city council has to approve it, I think, really the applicant. Would you like to make your comments now, Tom?
In my view, um, it's appropriate for the commission to take this up and hear it. Um, if you look at, uh, the municipal code, um, the fire chief operates under the general supervision, and the fire department operates under the general supervision of the city manager. The city manager does have a, um, general and plenary authority to, um, make an application like this, and so it would be my view that, that, that it would be appropriate for the commission, um, to, uh, proceed, um, with this application.
Would it be appropriate for us to continue it until the city councils approved it as well? We're, we're not here to decide if there's, there should or should not be an annexed or a new location for the fire department, we're here to determine, is this plan appropriate within the zoning, in my opinion, and is it, are all of the other criteria for design review and use permit met? Would be my understanding, can Noah weigh in on that perhaps?
That's true, it's a land use decision before the council, the, um, the larger policy question regarding the secondary fire station is, is the council's determination, the land use elements are the planning commission's determination, and I'd like to hear from the chief, as he probably can help shed some additional information.
Uh, the, uh, this has come before all the budget hearings, the, uh, it is in the budget, the rent for the structure, uh, has been approved in the 1718 budget, uh, came up, uh, multiple times. Paul asked questions, the mayor asked questions, if you recall, back in the-
That's where I got why it said, but I didn't, John.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was, that was the, they asked all the questions. Chief, do you need it? Yes, we do. Let me go to, let me show you why we need it.
I'm not-
Okay, this is the, uh, the building that was offered to us by, uh, the Wilson Felion family that just acquired this, they're gonna put OK Tire in the back, and, uh, the barn in the back, the small garage, that's where we would house the engine, and the, um, house would be occupied by firefighters. And the rent is split to keep, um, the firefighters in the house, and the other half is paid by the city for the engine. So it really works well as a great partnership. Um, this is the garage that needs to be, um, retrofitted, which is paid by 100% by the association from the lobster feed proceeds. So there's no fiscal impact to the city on, uh, restoring the structure. Um, here's the back end of it, we need to go 13 more feet to add on, uh, we're not adding on, we're just enclosing to that first pole behind the garage to house an engine, and this is the biggest problem. This is what, uh, happens, it's just fluid, the fire department and where they are, this is the daytime response, okay? You have, uh, 28 members on the fire department, but you don't see 28 dots there, do you? Because they don't work in St. Helena, okay? You only have four that are near the firehouse. But do you see that stretch right there, there's five dots all in a row? That's Sutter Home. Half of the daytime firefighters work at Sutter Home. The other half are Brown's Auto Parts, uh, Mayfield Malleoy, Vascony Insurance. So, the problem is, you all know about the traffic light out front here, what it's caused. Uh, if those four firefighters aren't there, that one dot over there in Sylvaner, that's me. You know, it takes me about four to five minutes to get to the station to get on an engine, normally I go straight to the scene, but we're really thin during the day, and all the jobs seem to be at the winery's, uh, south of town. And that one little dot on Zinfandel there, that's another firefighter that's a, uh, airline pilot, and he's there, uh, when he's in town, he's at, he's at home. So I have six in the south, seven in the south, and I'm getting one more that's working at Sutter Home if he, uh, passes the physical agility. So that's why, and the council understands that, and so, um, the fiscal impact is just rent at 1500 a month that's already been approved, so.
So my questions really just relate back to the actual, the design of the structure and the, and just the uses there. So, the firefighters will come, will, will basically stop, come to the location, they won't be housing there, you're not gonna house firefighters?
Yes, the front house-
Yes.
The house, there'll be two firefighters, it's a two-bedroom house.
So, 24/7, or they will just stay overnight during, when they're on call? Or would that become their permanent residence?
That's their residence.
So you're moving two firefighters into this location on a permanent basis?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then, the other question I had is, in terms of the, the back structure, maybe put that picture back up?
Oh, sorry, yeah. Uh-huh.
So I couldn't tell from the plans, what, to what extent are you doing work around beyond just kind of closing in that area, so what?
You see the first, uh, see where the structure is, and you see the first post?
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna extend it and close it to there so we can fit an engine, uh, in it. We'll have to take the wall out, put a header in, and so it'll house a 28-foot-long fire engine. What's gonna happen right now is it's gonna be a, a brush vehicle, which is a Chevy one-ton pickup with a pump in it, for now. And then, uh, if we do this enclosure, then we can fit every fire engine in there as they age, and we can switch and move, uh, depending on our, what we have in inventory.
Okay. Will there be any other uses in the house besides housing those two firefighters, or will be the office space or anything else that's-
No, it's just, it's, it's a house.
Right, no, that's what, that's what it is now, I'm just curious.
Built in 1900, something like that. Uh, there'll be a desk inside there to do a report for, uh, on a, after a fire call, and then that's about it. Everything from that first post back would be, uh, that's not ours, that does not come with the lease, it's only from that post forward, including the structure, and the driveway out to the street, so the engine can access.
Okay. Um, okay, so you're gonna have, oh, are we done? Okay. So you're gonna have two there, that leaves, um, how many firefighters come to on a call?
It's, it's all over. We can have two, we can have 16. Average would be somewhere around 10.
Okay, so you, you have six parking places there, you said?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
There would be only nine firefighters assigned to this station, the only ones, because we have to have a whole nother set of, uh, gear for them. So it's only the ones that would make a difference that, that live or work in the south.
Right, and I don't question at all the need for it, and I, you know, at all, but I, um, do question the exemption, um, the 15300.2, because I do think that it is, um, there is a reasonable possibility that activity that's going to be there is going to have a significant effect on the environment due to unusual circumstances. The unusual circumstances are, you know, 24/7, you might be, um, taking a fire truck out of there, um, uh, the, the noise from the, from the truck, I don't know, if you turn the sirens on right away, um, when you, when you come out of the firehouse, um, I don't know what your northern route will be out of there, I mean, will most of the time, will they be going north?
It'd be west, out of, onto Dowdell, would be heading west to Main Street, unless there's a call in the service area.
So they wouldn't be going down, um, La Fata or, um-
Oh, I would say 99% of the time, they're gonna go out Dowdell to Main and hang a left or a right.
Of course, on a, on a busy, you know, in the day, at a busy time, they might, um, do something different, but I see what you, yeah, but, you know, to go-
Normally, uh, on the weekends, it's a ghost town, nobody lives down there.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's a ghost town. During the day, you have people that are just going down to the service area, uh, you know, OK Tire and the printing shop.
Right. But I, I just think that there is, you know, like, it's a big, it's gonna be a big truck, you know, negotiating turns where trucks that size aren't usually there, and I just thought that, you know, the cars leaving and coming, I thought there, there, there could be, as, you know, at least the noise from the trucks and the sirens could be a change, that's all I'm saying, and I-
Oh, I mean, compared to the, um, 80,000-pound trucks that are going to Wine Service Co-op right across the street in a five-acre building, I mean, there's a lot of trucks in that area.
Yeah, I know, exactly.
And they come in all night, they come in and they park and they sleep, and then they unload in the morning.
Uh-huh. Yeah, this is actually a very good location for, for this project relative to other options.
There isn't any other options-
Yeah.
... besides service commercial.
Right. I was just wondering if, if everybody down there is aware of what your plans are, I mean, have you talked to the businesses and-
I've talked to the neighbors, Carl's Body Shop is the adjacent neighbor, and I've also talked to the folks at the, uh, as a dentist office on the other side.
Uh-huh, and they're, they're-
Well, they're, uh, one of the firefighters is, uh, okay, his fiancee works there, so they all know about it, yeah. And Carl's Body Shop, they, they know all about it.
Okay. All right, um, then I, you know, I was just, I just had-
Oh, sure.
-some concerns about that, and I just wanted to, um, ask. I didn't know either if it was gonna be used as an office, which-
No.
Which, yeah, so, yeah, I appreciate it.
You have to look at it as two separate, uh, you, the house is just gonna be a house, and then that, just that thing for one engine, and I put in there to add a utility, just, just in case, uh, we wanted to add a, a utility vehicle that would stay there, uh, for different uses, picking up hose, what have you, but, uh, very little light.
Okay, and so you're gonna take, the, the cost of doing all this stuff is, is not gonna be on the city, but 1500 a month for the rent-
Is.
-will be on the city?
Yes.
Okay, is that typical, I mean, does it, does the city pay for the rent of the firefighters, um, usually, for housing?
Oh, no, the housing is paid by the firefighters.
So they're paying?
Yes, it's 3,000 a month for both, so we cut it right in half, and so 1500 for just the garage is paid by the city for the city use, and then the firefighters pay, split the 1500 for the house.
It's worth noting, the, um, the residential use is, is not part of the land use decision, so the, the, uh, Fire Association has contacted the property owner and, and indicated they'd like to rent both structures for fire department use, however, the association, as it's well-known, has trouble, um, housing the firefighters, and so the association, uh, has looked at the house as an opportunity to provide additional firefighter housing, just use the house for a house. Separate from that, the fire department for the city is asking to use the garage as a, essentially an auxiliary location to park a fire truck, so that way, when people are responding, uh, rather than having to come all the way to the north end of town to get in the truck to then drive all the way back to the south end of town, they can ju- respond directly to this location, pick up the truck and go. It's not as if the people living in the home will always be the ones responding to the call.
That's what I was gonna-
So separate those, the house is used as a house that happens to be a place where the firefighters live, the garage is the fire station where a fire truck is parked, but no one will be staying there, um, it's just essentially a place to allow faster response times.
Yeah, it was a little unclear in the pack-up, but that's why I asked the question, it makes perfect sense. Yeah, and I, I, I assume they'll get used to, um, being able to flip through. Okay, thank you for answering the questions.
No worries.
I feel better about it.
All right, I'd like to open public comment, is there any public comment? We'll close public comment. Would you like to start discussion?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, it sounds like it's, um, needed, it's been well thought out, and that my questions were, were answered, um, and it's, is, we're just doing, we're not, you know, we're not doing anything that's gonna interfere with what the city council can do, so I'm okay with it. Yeah. And I agree, our role here is to look at this project and determine if it makes sense and if it meets all of our standards, and I agree that it does, so I think all other questions are not something for our board.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept the staff recommendation. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
No. Pick it up, John.
Okay.
The next item is 5.2, it's a request by Karen Alfaro and Cooper Crane on behalf of Wagner Ranch LLC for adoption of a resolution approving a lot line adjustment between parcels 009362015 and 009362016 to increase the size of an existing 38 parcel to 5.2 acres with a corresponding reduction in the size of an existing 15.28 acre parcel to 10.46 acres. The subject parcels, parcels are located north of Sulfur Springs and west of Highway 29 in the medium des- density residential and A20 zoning districts. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Kistner. Uh, the proposed lot line adjustment between, is between two contiguous legal parcels, one is approximately, uh, three tenths of an acre, or four tenths of an acre in size in a zone medium density residential, um, the other is approximately 15 acres in size and is split zoned between medium density residential and 20 acre agriculture. The applicant is requesting a lot line adjustment in order to essentially move the lot line, uh, distinguishing the two parcels to coincide with the zoning boundary between the medium density residential and A20 district. This would result in the transference of approximately 4.8 acres of land from the larger parcel to the smaller par- parcel, resulting in one, uh, 10 and a half acre parcel and one five acre parcel. No land is being rezoned or otherwise changed, and the total number of parcels in this case would be two, will not change as a result of this proposed adjustment. Uh, in fact, the lot line adjustment would eliminate having a parcel with two land use designations and would provide the added benefit of creating a parcel boundary where the city's land use designations change and where the urban limit line is. The configuration of the existing parcels, uh, can be seen on the attached exhibit, um, each of the existing parcels are currently planted with vineyards, and no change, uh, to this use is proposed at this time. So a lot line adjustment, uh, map may be submitted and approved for a boundary adjustment between four or fewer apart, uh, four or fewer existing adjoining parcels, which does not create, uh, a greater number of lots that, uh, than originally existed. Uh, subdivisions, including, uh, review procedures for lot line adjustments, adjustments are regulated by municipal code 16.08. Uh, in addition to identifying application requirements, section 1608070 grants the planning director and the public works director the joint discretion to jointly approve a lot line adjustment. If jointly approved by the planning director and public works director, uh, the code requires that the directors make a written report to the planning commission at its next regularly scheduled meeting. If the planning commission decides by a majority vote to formally review the lot line adjustment, then the planning commission, uh, sets a hearing date and public notice is sent out and the proposal is considered by the commission. If the planning commission decides not to review the lot line adjustment, then the planning director must publish the action to approve the lot line adjustment in the newspaper and send out a notice to all property owners within 300 feet of the site notifying them of the decision. Upon receipt of such a notice, property owners may then choose to appeal the action to the planning public works director, back to the planning commission, and pay the required appeal fee. Uh, in order to alleviate, uh, this overlapping and cumbersome administrative requirement described above, um, or previously, the, uh, decision on the lot line adjustment has been referred to the planning commission for consideration. This approach has the added benefit of streamlining the process, as it avoids the necessity of, uh, of bringing staff, excuse me, necessity, uh, previously described of staff bringing its decision back to the planning commission for validation, and then coming back at a separate meeting if the commission disagrees with that staff decision. In addition, this approach avoids a scenario whereby property owners end up being informed by staff after the fact of an approval made by staff, which would then require residents and/or property owners to appeal the staff decision, including a $1,000 fee in order for it to be considered at a public hearing. The proposed lot line adjustment was included in the public hearing notice into property owners and residents within 300 feet and published in the newspaper. Therefore, the action on the lot line adjustment is before the commission, and no additional noticing, uh, would be undertaken if, if this were, uh, approved. Um, therefore, staffer recommends that the planning commission determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15305, uh, minor alterations in land use limitations, which exempts minor lot line adjustments, and accept the required findings and adopt a resolution approving a lot line adjustment between the two parcels noted in the staff report. Uh, it should be noted that staff did receive three comment letters, which have been provided on the dais and the table at the back late this afternoon, uh, essentially requesting a continuance, um, however, staff feels that the lot line adjustment, uh, does not result in any significant land use ramifications, uh, and that there's no justification for a continuance at this time. Uh, it should also be noted that, uh, all three of those, uh, that submitted comment letters were, uh, sent, uh, notification by the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions of them as well.
I, I do have a comment and, and a question, I guess. I thought I read someplace else in here about a notification, and it, um, described the notification as notifying the, all the residents within 300 feet. This one is back, and I thought we'd made a change on that, this one is back to noticing the property owners, so which was it?
It was both, it was residents and property owners.
Oh, so you did both on this?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And that change is probably an oversight, these, the regulations live outside of the zoning code, so we made all the notification requirements to both residents and, uh, property owners, the commission directed that change, and staff made that change to all the zoning code requirements. It was probably an oversight to not include that in the subdivision section of the municipal code, which is separate from the zoning code, however, we are practicing that direction from the commission in notifying both residents and property owners.
Okay, good, okay, thanks for that, yeah. I thought that might have something to do with why some people, um, didn't get-
You actually notified a lot of people.
Yes.
Yeah.
Kennedy Court people.
I believe so.
Everyone within 300 feet was sent a notice, whether they owned the property or reside at the property.
Kennedy, Kennedy Court as well.
I have a question too, why, do you know why it was originally split up in the way it's split up right now? Does, and is there, is there, are there any records that would, um-
I don't know, um, at some point in time it was decided to do that, there, there's no benefit to that that I'm aware of.
Well, there might not-
It could have something to do with, um, the property being planted, that could be it, or it could have something to do with the, uh, designation of, uh, important farmland, uh, which is a state designation, but staff has not done that research as to why a portion of it is designated as agricultural and a portion of it is designated as residential, but it's not, uh, it's all in the same parcel.
Would there be a way to go back to the original, um, thing to look at it? To see what the reasoning might have been, or, or not? Well, maybe.
I would not feel confident in staff's ability to find that justification, given the, um, my knowledge of the existing records of the city.
Okay, my other question is, where is the urban limit line on here? It didn't mention it in, in the staff report, and I couldn't find it, so I was wondering if you could-
It's, it's, it's literally right in between the green and the orange.
It goes through-
I, I can show you.
Like in a vertical line?
Yeah.
And it goes the whole length of everything?
Right here.
So that goes to, just there, or the whole length of the parcel there?
The, the urban limit line, you can see where the, where the properties are obviously subdivided further, where the Kennedy Court is, and then the residential parcels to the south, and then obviously it's much larger agricultural parcels to the west.
Is that the urban limit line too? It goes all the way up to the top and all the way down to the bottom? Okay.
And that could also be part of the justification for the split zoning.
Yeah, I wonder what the reasoning was, I mean, you know, I'm just really curious why this would be the, but whatever, I just, I'm asking, that's all. Okay, thank you. My question in the notice, I, I was, um, contacted by a citizen who was concerned that the notice wasn't complete in terms of what they'd be looking at, so was it just a notification on the lot line adjustment, or what kind of backup came with it? This, okay.
Now, I'd like to ask, what the easements on both pieces of property, open space easement, could you tell me what that's for?
Are you, is your mic on, Grace? Why don't you ask your question again, so?
I'd like to know what the open space easement on both pieces of property is for?
The applicant's hearing is available to answer those questions.
Would the applicant like to, are, are, has everybody asked their questions?
Yeah.
Would the applicant like to speak, please?
You're gonna have to repeat the question, I didn't hear it. Kevin Alfaro.
He wants the question repeated.
Would, would you like to tell us about your project, or just answer questions?
Yeah, so we're not, we have absolutely no plans to doing anything with the property, we're just trying to bring the zoning consistent with the two parcels, um, the green block goes to Camus, which is Joe Wagner owns Coppercane, for who I work for, and that's his father's company. The beige goes to Preger, um, they're on grape contracts for a number of years, and They're on grape contracts for a number of years, and we don't really have any plans to doing anything other than to bring the project in line with the zoning.
Why? Why now?
Because we just bought it in the first year.
We just bought it.
Oh, I see. And what's the advantage of doing that or to not doing it?
Well, the advantage is we feel that it brings value to the property if it's subdivided or lot line adjusted in a way that is more appealing than having that little tiny square out in the middle of nowhere.
More appealing if you wanted to sell it or something?
Well, if, well, if you look at the way that's configured, if there was a need for housing in that little square on the right, then it could be, it could be done, I suppose. We don't have any desire to do it. Once the contracts burn off, we're gonna use the fruit for our own production and our program, so.
And why do you want to close the other thing? I'm just curious.
Close what?
Why do you want to, you know, close the place where they're to connect, where they're not disconnected?
I'm not sure I'm following.
Well, there's a, you want to make it, you want to fill in that.
No, no, that's, that's just to define where the urban limit line is.
No, he wants to, he wants to, you know, it has to, that's another lot line adjustment, right?
The proposal is to move the lot line to where the urban lot, lot, limit line is.
Right, so that's just another, like, you just, there's no practical reason for that? You just wanna?
No, I think it makes logical sense to do that while we're doing this at the same time. I'm not sure I'm following your question, but I, what we've, what we're proposing to do is bring the configuration of the parcels in a more logical fashion for us. Prager, like I said, takes one side of the property, Camus takes the other side of the property, configures it and zones it in a consistent manner with them, with each of them. We don't plan on changing or developing the property. We plan on take, just on a side note, the property on Crane, Hendrix, Vitalla, and Scruggs all goes to Camus too. So, you know, it's, it's, we're a long time St. Helena family that we continue to plan on farming the fruit. So we wanted to secure a high-end area of fruit.
I see, so I don't know who Prager, I don't know those names, so I guess I just.
I'm sorry, okay. So Prager is a.
Port and place.
Yeah, thank you. And Camus is a producer out of Rutherford.
So those people are using the land for the, to grow their grapes, but you own the land or they don't own the land?
Well, Hendrix owns the property, that leases it to Camus. Scruggs owns the property, sells fruit to Camus. Vitalla does the same thing. We own now what we call Palladini, which we bought in the first of the year, and we sell grapes to Camus and we sell grapes to Prager.
Okay, so those are your, those are your, the people who buy grapes from you? That's.
Correct.
Okay, so they don't own.
Scruggs owns the property, Vitalla owns the property, and Hendrix owns the property, sell grapes to Camus.
Okay.
And Camus is owned by Chuck Wagner by majority. Joe, who I work for at Coppercane, is the son.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, no, that's fine, yeah.
My ignorance is infinite.
No, it's okay.
A lot, a lot of.
And we respect the easements. I think it was parks or open space or something and, yeah, and, you know, we're respectful of that. And all we want to do is, I don't want to make it sound so simple, but all we're trying to do is configure it in a way that makes sense. So when we bought the property and this weird little square, and we just, it made sense to do it.
Okay.
We don't, we're not house builders. We don't plan on developing the property.
And just along the lines of what the applicant's discussing, lot line adjustments are ministerial in many jurisdictions. This is a housekeeping issue from a planning standpoint.
Well, not for my example.
Do you have any questions, Tracy? Are you through?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Anyone have any public comment?
Hi, I'm Robert Greer. I'm one of the owners of 1486 Sulphur Springs. And although I'm sure notifications were all done properly, there are 15 parcels that are adjacent to the new five parcel, five acre parcel. And I'll bet virtually none of them know what's going on here and what the possible ramifications are. I find it curious that this somehow was necessary if everything's gonna continue the same way it's been for an awfully long time. But I just think that more people should be aware of this, who might be affected in the future. And I doubt that they really comprehended what this means and what it might mean. So I don't, I guess only three of us responded.
Can I ask him a question?
To the notification, but it didn't occur to me. I mean, I received the physical notification, but I read it and even though we're adjacent to the, what would be the new five acre parcel, I didn't realize the new five acre parcel was medium density. And I think probably a lot of the parcel owners think that this is an ag preserve area. Whether that's, I don't know, it's wrong, but I bet that's true. So it makes sense to me perhaps to continue this so that all people who might be affected in the future can, can think about it and then ask questions.
So I'm curious, given that they were, that the people that you're talking about were sending these notifications, and I understand what you're saying, they may not have understood what they were. Do you have a sense of what you might, if this were continued, how, how more education to those people could happen? Or, you know, were you thinking of, I don't know what you would think would happen if, if it were continued, what you could do during that time to?
Well, I just, I think three of us would then contact every parcel owner and say, this is what's going on.
Okay. So you weren't thinking of the city doing anything? You were thinking of?
No, that's, that's it. I do have one question. I'm wondering what the long-term contracts go for, how long with Prager?
Good question.
It's either 19 or 20.
Years?
Would you come up to the podium so we can hear you, please?
So it's actually a short-term contract.
Oh, 2019 or 2020.
Well, first of all, these contracts are not public. But I'm willing, first of all, we can continue it. We don't, we're not in any particular hurry to do any of this. It was just, again, back to the ministerial type action, we just thought it was the right thing to do in terms of us being a landowner. I believe the contracts go to 20 or 21, 2020, 21. It could be 19, I forget. They both expire at the same time. Again, Chuck Wagner at Camus is Joe's father. You know, whether we continue on with contracts of grapes or whatever with him, you know, remains to be seen. But we planned to farm it, one way or the other. We didn't look at this as a housing development. We actually, believe it or not, we looked at this as a, as a great place, place to pick fruit, to make a high-end wine. So anyway, it was an opportunity, we saw it and we bought it.
Is a possibility of rezoning the medium density to A20 and having the whole piece be A20? And with that, with that, and then I understand you want that.
Well, I mean, in fairness, we bought the property under this condition.
That would be a larger question when we look at all zoning. You can't, you can't rezone.
I was asking if that's possible.
It would require a general plan amendment as well as a rezoning.
Right, okay.
What I'll just say is I think the concern of citizens is if it's, if we adjust, approve the lot line adjustment, are we opening the door for future development? So I think we have to take the applicant on its face value. I mean, that's how I look at it.
Oh, I totally believe he is sincere in what he's saying, but nobody knows the future, so.
Just, just to add to that, the fact that the medium density, larger medium density parcel is not subdivided from the agricultural portion of the parcel would not preclude development. Someone could come in and propose a multifamily housing project on that site without doing a subdivision.
Right, if it were zoned the way it's.
As it's currently zoned.
Yeah, as it's currently.
Regardless of what we do today.
That's correct.
Right, but that's, yeah, that could happen in the future.
And however, any development application would require full notice, full public hearings, SEQA determinations, much more significant process. Again, from, from the standpoint of, of the staff, it's housekeeping, but.
Well, perhaps we could assume that before these contracts run out in two years, three years, that the general plan will be done by then and that any rezoning that was gonna happen could, could happen during that time, so.
But that's all completely separate from our decision tonight. We're looking at this as a pure play.
The general plan does not.
But it influences it.
The general plan does not propose any land use changes on this parcel.
At this point, yeah. The reason I say that is there has been, it has been.
Is there any more public comment?
I have one more question. Could you explain the overlay?
Oh, yeah.
Would you step, step up?
So will you please step up to the podium?
Please, thank you.
Could you explain the rural overlay? What that means?
Not certain what you mean.
There's, it's a.
You're talking about the easement?
Our overlay on this whole property. I think if you look at your own map, it's written someplace.
So the zoning code does identify that this parcel has a rural residential overlay district. However, there is no specific direction in the zoning code regarding what that means. Typical of our zoning.
We either take it out or define it, one or the other.
It doesn't mean anything.
Is there any more public comment, please?
Hi, my name is Jane Inch, and my husband, Bird, and I just purchased 1582 Sulphur Springs, which is adjacent to the property that we're discussing. And we did not receive a notification. We did close escrow on the 19th of May and took possession June 2nd. So we just first heard about this last night, and of course, for all of the reasons that have been discussed tonight, we are concerned. And I am glad to hear from the applicant, and he does sound sincere. And yet, of course, we are concerned down the line because, you know, we buy these properties and part of the value is the open space. And so we did come up here tonight because we are concerned about that and kind of long-term ramifications of, you know, oftentimes when you hear about a lot line adjustment that's going to take place, it sort of opens a door for future things to happen. So we are quite concerned about it. However, I do feel better, you know, just the intention of what they're proposing does make me feel better. I still am concerned long-term. Thank you.
Any more public comments?
My name is Stapan Ganguly. I'm the owner of 1550 Sulphur Springs. I have to say that very kind, you know, communication from our new neighbors. I land, I came to know about this whole thing after 5 o'clock this afternoon. Do you know when this notification went out?
It's legally required to go out at least 10 days before this meeting, so.
Right, and I've been in Santa Elena throughout that time, and I collect the mail and I didn't receive it. But, you know, things can get lost in the mail, I get that. So, you know, you, you'll appreciate that I'm in total, you know, dark, I don't understand these things very well. My wife is working in the city. We want to consult the lawyer because we do not know what the long-term ramifications may play out. You know, we obviously contributed a lot of donations to the school, invested a lot of money doing remodeling this property, 1550, because, you know, we got this amazing view of vineyards, you know, behind our property. So, you know, so I'm here to express on behalf of my wife and our good neighbors, you know, that we're very, very concerned what's going on. We obviously need more time to understand what's happening. We, you know, please forgive me that I'm not so technical about, you know, plants and drawings, I'm not an architect, I'm in wine trade. So here I am, and I'd like you to consider, you know, please give us some time to understand this whole project. And we have to look at things in long-term, you know, way what might happen. And I appreciate the applicant explaining to us, and I understand all the good intentions, you know, for now, but what's going to happen in 10 years, 15 years, even five years down the road. Thank you very much.
Noah, could you speak one more time to the fact that this is already zoned to medium density regardless of what we do here tonight?
Sure. And I misspoke. There is, there are two paragraphs in the code regarding rural residential. And it essentially says that, and these areas are generally residentially designated properties that, where city sewer and water services are not available. And so it requests or identifies that larger lot sizes be required for a future subdivision if that is proposed. And it has specifics, if it's available by well, they should be this size. If municipal water is provided, then they can go down to a smaller size. But essentially, it asks for larger lot sizes should it be subdivided.
Should be subdivided.
Should it be subdivided? So if someone were to file a subdivision application on this parcel, the minimum lot size would be 10,000 square feet rather than 7,000 square feet, which is a lot of medium density, if there were water service. If there were no water service and they're served by wells. Sorry, I'm reading here.
All right.
If it's served by a well, it's one acre. And then it, it mentions 20,000 square feet and 10,000 square feet, but it seems to be a little bit inconsistent. But so essentially, it is intended to require larger lot sizes if a subdivision is proposed. Separate from that, the property, which you all should be aware of if you back up to it, is designated medium density residential, which allows, what's the density range?
5.1 to 16.
5.1 to 16 units per acre. So you should just be aware of that as of right now. And again, a subdivision would not be required for someone to propose that. They could come in and propose multifamily housing, so apartments. So that's something to be aware of as a property owner adjacent to this property.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and again, a noted, proposed at this time.
Again, regardless, that's today, so.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I don't want to belabor it, and I, and I mean this with all honesty. Our, you know, there's gonna be some things you like to hear and some things you won't. But our play is vineyard. We wanted a high-end vineyard in St. Helena where Joe Wagner grew up and went to high school here. So this is his father. Having said that, the value driven for this, we spent 10 and a half million dollars on this property, and part of the value is driven by its ability to have entitlements. Having said that, we want to farm it. And I know we, Camus, and then we took over the contract, spent a fair amount of money drilling wells to make sure it had adequate water supply to irrigate the vineyards, which has its own thing with certain folks. But our long-term objective here is, is to farm it. Joe is 35 years old. He's not going anywhere, I don't think. He's got six children, they're gonna go, they're all at the Montessori school, going through all the public school system and probably, and all the other things. So we're here to stay. Joe's fifth generation. And I know that's soft noise and maybe white noise, but that is our objective. So I just want to throw that out there.
Any more public comment? Public comment is closed. Tracy, would you like to start discussion?
You know, for me on this one, I empathize with the neighbors. I'm, and can share their concerns. However, what we're doing tonight doesn't, doesn't mitigate that because there are, these lots are already up against, they're in a zone medium density. So regardless of the lot line adjustment, it's not, it's not doing what I think the neighbors would like to see happen. If it sounds like the applicant is open to a continuum, a continuance, I think that's really up to the applicant to, if that's really in fact true, so that the neighbors can feel at least an opportunity to have a conversation. It doesn't sound like, although the, the proper notification was in fact done, conversations weren't had. And that typically, in these processes, I think makes everybody feel a little bit better and more informed. So I would say in our small town, Santa Elena, that's probably not a bad thing to consider. But I don't think from a planning commission standpoint that we should, that, that should come from the audience and from the applicant taking a few minutes to deciding if that's what we're gonna do here. But because I think from a zoning and from what's proposed to us in terms of an application, it's kind of cut and dry, in my view. But I do support the conversation, and I would offer, maybe we give the group and the audience a few minutes to talk that over, so.
Well, I heard both sides of this argument say that they were willing to continue this. And since that has been the request and the applicant is willing to do it, I think that's an important piece. And I mean both spellings of the word piece. And I would, I would like to continue it as requested by the neighbors and okayed by the applicant. It just seems like a reasonable thing to do to me.
But I would just underscore that everyone knows what the conversation about, what we do regardless of a lot line does not mitigate development. You're already there. You're, that's, that's what the zoning is. So, you know, think about what it means to the applicant in terms of, you know, pushing this down the road. There's, there's a cost involved with that, so, you know, do it with eyes open because it may not get you the outcome you want.
Well, and I agree with you, Tracy. I, I really think that the, obviously, the, the notices went out. I don't think it's gonna make any difference what we do or what the decision is amongst the neighbors. And therefore, I think we should take a vote tonight, but some like to make a motion.
I think it would make a difference. I think people need to be more informed, there's more to find out, but I'm not in the majority here, so I just want to.
No more?
Yeah, my only thought is if it's going to then be appealed, that's, that just opens a whole other can of worms. So if, if five minutes for the group to discuss with the applicant, I just think it's a good citizen thing to do.
Well, I think they asked for more time than that to do more than just have a discussion with the applicant, so I don't know why we can't accommodate that since the applicant is willing to do that.
I just think it's a waste of time.
But the neighbors don't.
Do you want to vote or?
Yeah, I mean, can they discuss? Can the applicant weigh in?
Is that what the neighbors want?
It's up to the applicant to make that right, not up to the neighbors.
The applicant can request a vote.
No, we're, we're happy to continue. As I mentioned before, we have other projects. Like I said, I lived in this town for 11 years. I sat up here as a school board member for several years. I mean, I get it. And we want to be good neighbors. I gotta be honest with you, I lived in this town for enough, and I've had a accounting practice here. You're actually lucky Joe Wagner bought the property. I mean, I gotta be honest with you, it could have been sold to a lot of other people. Maybe Andy Becksaw would be his second best. But Joe Wagner, you're lucky to have a neighbor like Joe. So, but I'm, we're happy to continue it. We're in absolutely no hurry. We could drag this out for a while. So whatever, whatever you want to do. If you want to continue it, that's entirely up to you. We're happy, I can give you my business card. You can call me anytime. There's farming practices you don't like, you know, it's too much noise, whatever it may be, and we can try to accommodate as best we can.
Is public comment open again? Grace?
No, we, we didn't have an open public comment.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if he was, if that was public comment, because somebody else.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we continue this into the future, to our next meeting, if you want, if you want to specify.
I was just, to a date certain, to the next meeting?
If that's, if that seems possible for you, if it's that, you know, if that's, it seemed like, if, it seemed like that would be enough time, two, three, how many weeks is that?
So we'd be continuing the item to the July 18th meeting because we are not having a July 4th meeting. That would give you guys almost 30 days to have discussions. The applicant has offered to provide his business cards, and you all can contact them. You're also free to contact us if you have any questions about the implications of this land use designation. There is an open space easement buffering those parcels on the, the court to the north, which that has some implications for, should it be developed in the future? So if you have questions about that, we're happy to ask, answer them.
Are you talking about the ones in Kennedy Court?
And I'd be willing to second that motion with the understanding that the neighbors under, think about the zoning, that they're not, we're not changing the zoning. We're giving you opportunity to have a conversation.
No, I think they should not think about it. I'm just joking.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
So the items continue to the July 18th meeting. If you all would like to attend, applicants in the back, if you'd like to chat with them.
All right, we have no other scheduled manner, matters, departmental reports.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I, I would just like to take a moment to thank the two commissioners on either side of you, or one on either side of you. You all both have served on the commission for a significant amount of time. Ms. Sweeney, I think, filled in for a vacancy, filled in two and 1/2 years. And Ms. Monet has sat in her position on the commission for four years. It's an ultimate, a very long commitment. And we, the city, very much appreciates your service. And so we have some certificates we'd like to provide to you.
Thank you. It's been fun working with you.
It's been fun.
Thank you to Noah. It's, I've learned a lot. It's been really interesting. And I encourage, I know that there are still, I think, open positions, so encourage citizens to participate. It's a good way to get to know your town. I think it's a good way to realize that there's, there's more to this than just the zones and just the ordinances.
We have a lot of people who've applied.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're like 18 or something.
Good, that's great.
No, no, not 18.
Oh, I thought it was 17.
11 or 12 now.
There, there's a number. More than, more than the three seats.
It was either 11 or 12. I, I don't remember which, either 11 or 12.
Whatever, it's more than three seats. But thank you guys for the ride. I mean, it has, it's been rough at times. And also, the city attorney, I have to thank him for his patience and. And I could come, I have applied to come back, but it's, it's quite possible that I won't. So if this is goodbye, goodbye. Otherwise, I'll see you next time.
And I have not, I have not applied. I've enjoyed it, but my, my other commitments are making, I don't feel I'm giving enough time to the planning commission, so.
I don't know why.
Okay. I feel like I'm getting my C legs, as in commission legs, just after four years. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's really been interesting. I really like.
Do you have an agenda forecast?
Uh, there is an agenda forecast in the back of your packet. It was updated a little while ago, so this is, it's a June 6th update. It doesn't have the most recent information regarding what was on the hearing or the agenda tonight because it's relatively light. It is worth noting that the city council will be appointing the planning commissioners at their next meeting, so one week from today. So we will have three new planning commissioners potentially at the next meeting, which is July 18th. We are not having a July 4th meeting. In addition, the chair will be presenting, along with myself, to the city council from the planning commission's perspective. Boards and commissions are required to report out to the city council on regular basis. And so we will be presenting to the city council at their next meeting, so a week from today. And we intend to present the, the items of interest to the planning commission that you all took the time to prioritize a few weeks ago. So, so that will be presented to the city council. And I'm hoping that that will be utilized to kind of focus some of the department efforts moving forward through the summer as we get the general plan before the, the city for adoption, and then also move on to some of the larger level projects. We have committed to a comprehensive zoning code update to modify the general plan. We have committed to the creation of design guidelines for all, all development types, so residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera. And there's also some discussions about a comprehensive housing analysis. So definitely a lot of work for our department in addition to all the pending, or the current development applications we have. So stay tuned. There'll be a lot going on.
Thank you. Anything else? Meeting adjourned.